United States of America and to the Republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the Exeter Town Council meetings are on this 15th October 24th order for the fourth. Please take the role.
Dan Patterson.
Here.
Mike LaFaye.
Here.
Diane Allen.
Here.
Olivia DiFrancesco with another commitment and Cal Ellis.
I'm here, but Dan, if you would, I'd like to speak to Olivia's absence. She has sent us a message and I'd like to speak to her. I would like, I'd like us to hear.
Go ahead, Cal.
Cal, Mike, Diane, and Dan, first I want to say it is a privilege and an honor to be able to serve my community sitting alongside you. We all know Asa Davis has demoralized us and other Exeter employees with his derogatory comments and false accusations. He has affected the morale and productivity of the hard-working team at the town hall. People fear him and feel they no longer work in a safe, respectful, productive work environment. At the town council meeting on July 29, 2024, when asked to abide by the rules of procedure, Asa Davis approached the council table in an aggressive manner and spoke to the vice president of the council in an aggressive tone. I thought there was about to be a physical fight and feared for our safety. This is unacceptable and I feel a line has been crossed. I believe it is incumbent upon the president of the town council to handle this matter and put measures in place for the safety of Exeter's town council, town employees, and citizens. Taxpayers do not have free rein to say and do what they please in public meetings. The town bully can't feel that he's above the rules. He was disruptive, threatening, and insisted on speaking about things that weren't relevant to the meeting. It was not normal discourse in decorum. Anyone who does this should be escorted out of the meeting. The First Amendment is not a shield for this type of behavior. I have read that other towns with similar problems designate a point person for an individual like this so only one person deals directly with them. We as the town council need to make this happen so the people's workflow isn't interrupted anytime someone wants to come into the town hall. In today's political climate, I don't think it is at all unreasonable for me to feel unsafe and have trepidation about attending meetings going forward. The behavior of Asa Davis is having a chilling effect on and affecting the mental health of all who work for the town of Exeter. Accordingly, I will not be attending the council meeting tonight, August 2nd. I look forward to hearing the council's thought about an ongoing solution. Sincerely, Olivia DiFrancesco, Exeter Town Council. Dan, I apologize for taking the time, but I will tell you that I hold Olivia's participation in this council to be exemplary and really important to us. And when I read this this afternoon, I placed a call to her immediately. She did not answer. I'm distraught by this and I know you weren't present, Dan, so you're not responsible for this, but I really felt that it needs to be said. There were people present that night and I heard from one person who said they thought that behavior was very out of line. So that's thank you for indulging me, Dan. Thank you.
Can I make a correction? Olivia's absent.
Yeah, okay. Number three, acknowledgements and announcements. A is Rhode Island primary is Tuesday, September 10, 2024. Voting will take place from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at St. Ceteri Tackawatta Church, 84 Newsnack Hill Road, 84 Exeter Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, and Metcalf Elementary School, 30 Newsnack Hill Road, Exeter, Rhode Island. Voters who ordinarily voted Exeter Chapel will vote after Metcalf School. Unregistered voters will vote at the Exeter Clerk's Office, 675 Tenrod Road, Exeter, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., limited ballot. Voters who wish to care to vote early can do so at the Exeter Clerk's Office, 675 Tenrod Road, Exeter, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., beginning August 21st and ending Monday, September 9th at 4:00 p.m. Mail ballot applications for the Rhode Island primary are being accepted by board of canvases until 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 20, 2024, at the Exeter Clerk's Office. The last day to register to vote in the Rhode Island primary is Sunday, August 11. Unregistered voters can register online or visit the Exeter Clerk's Office during normal business hours. Unregistered voters who wish to register in person on Sunday, August 11, should visit the Exeter Animal Shelter, 169 South County Trail, Exeter, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Dan, before you go on.
Go ahead, Cal.
Be patient, Dan. Be patient. I do have what I call a public service announcement. I had a question myself and now I've received a couple of calls from residents regarding the fire district bills and I just thought I would share with you since some of you, since, I don't know, what are you giving away tonight, Dan? I don't know. What is this? Anyway, all right. If you have any question about your fire district bill, you haven't misplaced it, it hasn't been lost in the mail, they haven't been sent. I spoke to a assessor who doesn't deal with that, it's a whole separate issue, but there apparently is an issue with the bill preparation software that they're trying to address and I understand that has been or is being, I'm getting nods from.
Is being.
From is being. So eventually you will get a bill, but you didn't miss it. So I just thought you might like to know that.
We can't wait, Calvin.
Well, I'm sure you can. And if I'm speaking too loudly, it's because there's a young lady here, well, young, young is a relative term, she's sitting here and she told me that she really can't hear well. So I'm trying to speak loudly, so she, you're welcome. We go way back. Way, not that far.
You good now?
I'm good. Thank you, Dan.
Number four, the motion to approve the agenda order.
Wait, wait, I'm waiting. Can I please make a change in the agenda order and move new business item 9G to the first new business item because I'm looking for, oh, a gentleman in the back of the room who is here to address that issue. I placed it on the agenda last month and the gentleman lives far out of town, in like halfway to New York City, and I said, let me try to let you speak earlier and so.
So you want to move 9G to.
9G, 9G to the beginning, the beginning of new business and then I would move to approve the agenda as I amended it.
That's your most thing.
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Approval consent agenda. Communications, Cal, you got any communications?
No, but I have one. Number four, please.
Okay. Two, three.
Two?
Two, that's two, yeah.
Two, three.
No. Number two, two.
You have communication number two, communication number two.
Two, four. Yeah, two sheets.
I got it.
Two sheets.
I don't see much.
Under the minutes, I will have to recuse on the number five. I was not here for July 11th.
And I'm sorry, Dan, but I would like to remove item number one, the minutes of June 3rd. I just have a quick question on those, if we could take them separately.
Number one, under what, Cal?
June 3rd minutes.
Okay.
Would you please, yeah, would you, would you, would you remove them from the sentence agenda, please?
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus number one and number five in the minutes. Do we have, do we have five already? Did we get five? Number five.
Okay, is there a second civilian motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now you want to discuss number one first, council?
Sure, please. That's the June 3rd agenda and I don't usually read the comments that are quoted here from Mr. Davis, but I did glance through them and I came to the last sentence and I thought, well, that perhaps Lynn has a vote. Lynn, I know that you're recording and the recording skills are exemplary, but I keep writing and I read it several times and I wondered if by chance you made a mistake because it says here another morale booster besides Friday afternoons off, which doesn't happen, but there was consideration, would be making town hall a canine-friendly workplace. And I paused on that because I know I've been here when treats are given out in some offices to Mr. Davis's dog. I started upstairs once when I was here and as I started up the stairs, a dog greeted me at the top of the stairs. So I didn't, I didn't go any further, not that I was necessarily afraid of the dog, but I assumed that man Asa Rattles upstairs probably would bill, or would get saved. But then, then I understand that you had asked a leash be placed on the dog, but someone said that the leash is placed and then, and then it's unmanned and the dog still proceeds to go through the building with a leash and it's not, and it's not handled. And I thought, you know, maybe it's the feature in me, but I thought there were state grants about dogs being, how do you say it, under control, leashed in public buildings. And so I just, I know Lynn, from what I told you, asked it to be leashed, maybe I'm wrong. You and I didn't talk about it, but someone else mentioned it. Is that a mistake? That's what was said, to make it canine-friendly. Okay, well, it seemed to me it is, treats are given out. All right, Lynn, thank you, Dan, that's it.
So you don't want him to accept the minutes?
And move to approve as written.
June 3, 2024, the second. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Does that include the vacation session procedure?
Yes, number one.
Yes, only number one.
Number five, town council special meeting, July 29, 2024. I was not here.
I'll make a motion to approve the town council special meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number six, vacancies and appointments. Personnel board?
None.
None.
We see it's wrong.
Conservation commission is down to only needing one member.
Well, we know six in the current ordinance says we need seven in order for that commission to be activated.
One more. Continue the process, anybody knows anybody. Okay, B, resignations, none. C, appointment. Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust committee members, two are needed to serve a four-year term, beginning date of appointment.
Have you seen any dismount?
Junior hearing board, alternate member to serve unexpired term ending November 6, 2026.
We're led to interest this one.
Number three, tax board review, alternate member to serve unexpired term ending August 2nd, 2024. Okay. Number four, public works worker. That we're going to discuss later on, you want to do that later on to executive session?
Yes, Dan, thank you.
Okay. Number five, animal control officer?
We haven't received any.
Okay. Expiring terms, none. On public hearings, there's four public hearings today. The first one, A is an outdoor entertainment license application, Karen Levine applicant, after the friends and Exeter animals, the whole classic car show, including vendors on Saturday, September 14, 2024. The ring date is Sunday, September 15, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Exeter Animal Shelter, 169 South County Trail, Exeter, Rhode Island. And the motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is Karen here somewhere? Is he out?
Well, Joyce Bastian, I have to state this for you. Joyce Bastian, yeah, the valley really. We do, we've been doing this, I think it's the 13th year, I don't know how many.
Do you want it to spring to or just?
Just the odd sale and that, but we've been doing this, we raise a lot of money for the shelter and everybody loves it, it gets bigger and bigger every year. It's been a huge success and it's good for the town.
Any questions from the council?
And people donate food for the animals to come in.
Go ahead, Cal.
I'm sorry, but yesterday I was in the company of a friend from out of town, in another town east of it, and she said, you know, the animal shelter really needs help. And I said, well, help, I mean, they're doing the very best they can and, but she said she saw a Channel 10 piece on the animal shelter needing something and she said she came to see you, Deana, because you're high school classmates. And I said, well, and she said, you really need to, they really need help. And I said, well, they've got a fundraiser coming up, you know, so, so it's your classmate and I know her, so.
Yeah, she said she.
We make sure that she knows that you're trying to raise money and everyone should know, trying, they're trying to raise money, donations, you know, the kind of thing.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Not a stop.
Motion to close the public hearing? So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, Cal, make a motion.
$209.24 is over in advertising and certified mailings and there's a $100 application fee owed.
And it's split hairs, but if we make a correction and make this 2024 to 2023, maybe it's just.
So sometimes you do waive the filing thing.
The application fee, correct?
I'll make a motion to waive the application fee. That's one of the hours.
And I'll make a motion to approve the application, what that fee was. Can we close, can we close the hearing?
Yeah. So we're going to blend your motions.
Do you have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you have a question there?
Thank you.
Yes, that just expired. Other than Cal, can everybody speak louder so we can hear you?
Oh, I can't hear you, but some people, okay, so, all right.
Did you say others than?
Other than you.
Oh.
Joyce, Joyce, did you get $209.24 for advertising and certified mailings?
And those, those are ones we grab, those are like from last year. We have new pamphlets out that we've been hanging around town.
Okay, the second public hearing is a liquor license application, class F1, special one-day event. Matt Richardson, owner and applicant, Tilted Barn Brewery, One Helm, 220, Exeter, Rhode Island, Lot 39, Block 1, Lot 1A. Need a motion to open the public hearing?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's right, we also need a motion to open up.
I'll make that motion as well.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't do too many of them.
No, we don't.
Okay, is Matt here or?
He's not, I'm here, I'm Stacy Costello.
Okay, I saw your name, you were next, so come on up so everybody can hear.
Thank you. It's for, so we need a one-day local license at the Tilted Barn for bringing in outside vendors and breweries from other states. It's a one-day event that they do every year, this is the third year. They do donate a portion of the proceeds to local events and last year they donated to the Exeter Volunteer Fire Department and also a local family in need that had a child that had cancer. It's a great community event, it's always very tame and well-put-on and it's a good positive environment for.
What is the date on that?
Seven, looks like September 7th. I just got to reiterate that, Dan, so people know.
It's not on the, probably on the application.
It is, on the license.
And they sell about 300 tickets.
Okay, any questions from the council? Any questions from the public?
I have one, $165 is full for the advertising.
Sure. Thank you.
Everyone knows where it is, right? Let's go, yeah. Go see those folks.
Yeah. I close the public hearing. Good thing before you do the vote also.
It's all good.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing and then move the license.
Well, yeah, you're open, you're an equal, so you can continue.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we need a motion as the liquor licensing board.
Move that the application be approved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Which, the understanding that's subject to.
Paying the advertising.
Yeah.
Okay.
Close the hearings, reconvene.
Motion to close the hearing as the Exeter Liquor Licensing Board reconvenes the Exeter Town Council.
Second.
And second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item secret of public hearings is a secondhand dealer's license application, James T. Turner applicant, E.W. Gardner Golf Cars LLC, 247 Newsnack Hill Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, Lot 20, Block 3, Block 14. Need a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is Mr. Turner here somewhere? Come on up. Tell us what you got to do.
Well, one of the, I'm trying to get a dealer's license from the Department of Motor Vehicles, which is required after Governor McKee signed the bill in effective July 1st of this year for low-speed vehicles.
Okay.
And that's what I'm here for.
Didn't need it before.
So then you won't even do it.
With our new law equation?
Yes. Just one of many.
Mr. Turner, how long has your business been, yeah, I know it's been.
Probably since the late 90s.
Late 90s.
Yeah. And we've always sold golf cars and utility vehicles. You're ready for some dunking, right? Correct.
And are you expanding your offerings beside the golf cars to other?
Well, during COVID, I couldn't get golf cars. So the company that I was able to get product from is Bentelli and they make low-speed vehicles. So I've been selling those since 2021, 2020.
Am I the only one that doesn't really know what you mean? Because I only drive a high-speed.
Bicycle.
By low speed.
Easy go, Frank.
But they are golf, I mean, I've had a golf cart and that's not what you mean, right? That's a low speed. No, no, no.
Golf cars, golf cars are not low-speed vehicles.
Oh, no, it's like, like, sorry with the picture, I kind of. Well, not sorry, but you know what I mean.
So if you lived in the villages in Florida?
Yeah.
You'd buy one of these. Then there are many, many of the Charles Town and Bonnet Shores.
Can you put a plate on these? I'm sorry, can you put a plate on these, you register them?
Yes, right, that's why the DMV requires a dealer's number that I'm trying to get and this is just one of many things that I.
Bicycle.
Yeah, like.
Have you been able to operate over the last 30 days since the law was?
I have bit the dust.
I'm operating, but not selling these or this kind.
It was an interruption.
Right.
I'm here for the state to get more money. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public on his application?
I have one.
Okay.
So they're requiring you to register them or you think that's the wave of the future?
No, they are, the requirement is, so everything that I sold up to June 30th, people were able to register them.
To drive on the roads?
On local roads.
Yeah.
Way sure.
Yeah.
Excuse me, your name, please, your name?
Wendy Fenner Auburn, 37 West Shore.
Please stand up and give your names for the committee panel.
Yes, Brian Sampson, Highland Court across the street. Just a quick question, okay, and number one, I think you have a fabulous business, it's a nice business to have there. How fast do these new vehicles go? And when they say local roads, like, this is not a local road, this is one over to the highway.
That's a highway. Also, you can't, you can't do any highway driving. And it goes, Bud Craddock, when he does the, once a month, video show with Gene Balacenti, said you have to check with every local community because they're all different. Some will allow you to cross the highway, but not drive on the highway.
So at this point, I don't think we know where we stand because it's kind of a new concept. How fast do they go?
Oh, I'm sorry, the federal requirement is 25 miles an hour.
Is top speed.
And you can only drive on roads of 35 miles an hour or less.
Thank you.
Okay.
With a license?
Pardon?
With a driver's license?
Yes, right. Any other questions from the public?
Advertising and certified mailings, they have $132.12.
Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to bring James T. Turner applicant, E.W. Gardner Golf Cars LLC.
James J.
J, oh, they got T, J, Turner applicant, E.W. Gardner Golf Car, Golf Cars LLC, a secondhand dealer's license.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That would be fun.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. D-Class 2 kennel license application, Kimberly White owner, applicant, Cozy K9 Retreat, 82 Sodom Trail, Exeter Rhode Island, Plaque 49, Block 4, Lot 37. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Sound move?
Second.
I just wanna ask, solicitor, I have used Kim on one occasion to watch my dogs for a week, and I don't think it's a conflict of interest, but I just wanted to check, is it okay, do I have to abstain, or is it okay for me to?
If you have an ongoing business relationship, it would be, but if it's not an ongoing,
I could use her again, I've only used her once so far.
But you don't have, you don't have a business relationship with her or an ongoing?
I do not.
Okay. Unless you feel that there's something that impinges on your ability to be impartial.
No, I just want it to be forthcoming, that's all. Thank you.
It might humble, okay, but again, not the ethics word, but I don't believe.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to hear the second? All in favor?
Yeah, it was.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Use the applicant here. Gonna tell us what you're doing.
Okay, I'm watching the walk side of my home, I've been on over for six years, and I've been doing dog sitting, and I didn't realize that I needed a special use permit, so I went and found this only one two months ago and was approved, and I just wanted to do the briefing.
Well, no, I think the record should indicate that, you know, there was a, what is it right here, a ruling that you have a copy of that gives you some restrictions.
I placed the restrictions on myself to ease the neighbors.
Right, because, well, we do, your neighbor, Mr. Ward, has written to us, and have you spoken with the neighbors about?
Yes, they all came to the meeting, so we addressed all their concerns at the zoning meeting, and then I said that I'd be willing to make those concessions, and then they approved it. So I have the license, yes.
Well, I'm sorry, and again, I, it's not like I like to hear myself talk, but when you speak about concessions, I know there was mention here, Mr. Ward was at one point a zoning officer, so he mentions that there, I think he does in his letter, that there really isn't a definition of kennel, so when you say concessions, what did they ask of you?
Well, Paul was concerned if I was gonna get into breeding, and I said I wasn't, you know, a breeder. He said, are you gonna get into grooming? And I said, no, I didn't go to school, and I'm not going to go to school with you either. He was concerned about an actual kennel, because I do this out of my home, so I said I'm not gonna put up a kennel, I'm just doing this out of my home, so we addressed all the neighbor's concerns that they zone on board.
I'm just. Especially usual, Brian, looks like.
Oh, another thing was, they didn't want the license to go with the property if I was to ever sell it.
So.
So I said I would sell it as a was farm, because I have almost seventeen acres, and I have a registered was boarding facility.
Well, he, and he wrote, he said he couldn't be here exactly, and we don't need to hold it up, because he does speak for those issues, and I think for the record, what you indicated here is sufficient for me, but I can't speak for any of the rest of the councils, so I
don't have to speak to this. I, I used Kim once, as I said, and I can say that she has a great operation, she has, she dedicates the entire local level to the dogs, so that's an indoor spot, she has dedicated couches, she has, it's a great area downstairs, she does allow them upstairs as well, but mostly down, there's horses there, it's such a relaxed atmosphere, there's a run that she fenced off a pretty good L-shaped run with a double gate so they don't escape, and I think it's a great place for the dogs. She does a good job as far as I, as far as I can say.
Thank you. Deana came today and just did a surprise visit, and said that she was going to do an inspection, and I said, come on in, come in now, and she said, I can come in now, and I said, sure, she came in on the gal, and I showed her the other facility and the fencing and the downstairs and the air conditioning and the heat air conditioning.
Thank you for offering that. Deana, did you want to just say a quick word for the record?
I did go out this afternoon, and she's right, she let us right in, she has the whole back entrance to her, into her basement, which has the three rooms all kind of open, but they're all gated, she has one room that has crates in it where the dogs sleep at night, she can put them into crates, and there's a room where if they get along together, they, it's a bigger room, so she can have three or four dogs if they play, and then she's got a room that's separate, in case she has one that does not get along with other dogs, she has a separate room, you go out the door, and there's a huge fenced-in area, it's just huge, and it goes all the way around, and like he said, there's double gates between them, so if she has to move them from one to the other, they can't escape, they go into the small area, then she puts them into the bigger area, so she can move them around safely.
So it's the basement of what?
Yes.
I think we have any of the kennel facility.
Yeah, so it's not a kennel, but because I have four dogs in my keep, I had to go for the license, and the neighbors were upset, which I totally understood, and I told everyone, I understand your concerns, and I'm willing to address any of your concerns, so I did in the zoning.
That was a seven days a week, the operations?
Yeah, yep.
What's the average number of dogs per day?
Um, I'd say average six.
And most of them are just starting the day?
No, they stay over, they stay overnight, so I don't do daycare, so they're not coming and going constantly. People go on vacation, they're bringing their dogs.
Babysitting.
Babysitting. And I require all inoculations, I require rabies certificates, they all have to be up to date on Boratella and all the vaccines, I clean with Kennel Sol, which is a germicide that's not cheap, and I make sure I mop every day with that and do everything I can to prevent and, you know, take a bar or something.
You've been doing this for a while.
I've been doing this for like seven years, and I didn't know that I wasn't now.
That's all right, that's not why I asked.
Seven years.
No, I'm not the kennel police.
No, I know, I'm just trying to do the briefing.
Is there any type, Deana, is there any type of license required by the state for this kind of operation?
Only if she does breeding.
Only if you do breeding?
She's gotta have a special license for breeders, a breeder's license.
Questions from anybody else in the council? Any questions from any members of the public?
No neighbors are here that wanna speak to this.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Soon.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion now.
Make a motion to approve Class 2 kennel license application of Kimberly White owner, applicant, Cozy K9 Retreat, 82 Sodom Trail, Exeter Round, Plaque 49, Block 4, Lot 87.
Certainly.
Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Put it again. Kim, $204.60 now to the inserted.
Next is public comment, and please note it's a three-minute time limit for a few fifteen minutes for this block, I have eight people signed up, so if you might come in and ask, the first individual is Mary Sullivan.
I'm gonna stand here, go on.
Oh, stand up so everybody can hear.
Up here?
All right, as long as we can hear you, so.
Okay. My name is Mary Sullivan, I reside in the Deerbrook condominium community, and I live at 58 Whispering Pine Way. I'm here to ask the council to address an issue regarding the long-term violation of the town's own policy on noise, which is Article 2, Section 22 to 42, the noise policy, that has affected me and neighbors whose backyards above mail road. For several months, we've been subjected to the loud noise created by large, heavy trucks traveling up and down mail road every weekday, often beginning before 7:00 AM and continuing until 4:00 to 5:00 PM. In an effort to determine the reason for this heavy traffic, I went to the town hall on July 24th. My inquiries at town hall led me to Hal Morgan, Exeter's zoning inspector. He informed me that the trucks were part of a project to install a solar farm on mail road. He also stated that there was nothing he could do about the noise. My further inquiries led me to determine the name and contact information of the company responsible for this project, which was Nautilus Solar LLC. On July 26th, I spoke to a representative at this firm and was informed that the trucking would continue to use mail road at least until the end of November. In Section 22-37 in the town's policy on noise, it states that it shall be unlawful to operate any equipment in a residential area so as not to exceed 50 decibels between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and not to exceed 55 decibels between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. From my research online, I have determined that the average noise level for heavy truck traffic is 80 to 90 decibels, far exceeding the levels cited in the town's policy. So, in summary, I ask, will the town enforce its own policy on noise?
Did you say that was for equipment, Mary? Equipment or motor vehicles?
It's got trucks, I could even read it. Yeah, I guess I don't have it with me, but it's, it's a lot of different, you know, machinery, trucks.
Heavy trucks.
Heavy trucks.
I don't have it, I'm. So I'd like this to be mattered, to be put on the agenda for the next meeting, because we've been tortured for months now with this, and it's gonna continue, she said. Her statement to me, Holly of the Solar, Nautilus Solar, was that her estimated, what I really wanted to know is, when is this gonna end? Can we handle it, you know, if it's gonna end next week, maybe I can handle it, but she said November, end of November, and hopefully the trucks will be hopefully ending, and they hope to finish it approximately early December, so.
All right, I gotta get on to the next one, ma'am.
Okay.
The next one is all for Sodom.
Yeah, I concur with everything that she says, I live at 66 Whispering Pine Way, and I wake up, it's before seven o'clock that they start, and the trucks are very, very heavy, but I'm more concerned about the fact that mail road is not built to handle that type of traffic and those trucks with that weight, and I can see that road deteriorating. Now, I don't wanna be, as a taxpayer in this town, become liable for a activity that is taking place that is not actually allowed, and I, I agree that we should have a hearing on this and find out whether or not this is gonna be enforced, because that ordinance is there and it should be enforced.
Number three is Beth Brown.
Hi, Beth Brown, I reside at 66 Whispering Pine Way in Deerbrook. I back my fellow neighbors 100% on their concerns. Speaking to Holly from Nautilus Solar, she stated that this project will last until, she told me, December to January. We are hoping to resolve this problem with maybe a no-through truck or weight limit sign. The Shatner Farm project is our next traffic concern. I have sent two letters and attended a town meeting concerning this problem. I have been to the town hall many times, informing the status of mail road being either commercial or residential. No one could give me a direct answer. All my research implies residential. We were told when buying our house, it was a country road. When driving down mail road, it definitely does not resemble 95 with four lanes, yet 18-wheelers and large dump trucks are permitted. Besides endangering people, it has affected our peace and comfort of our homes. We cannot open our windows due to the noise, the vibrations, and the exhaust smells. Our beautiful retirement home has definitely been compromised. I do have the articles for the ordinance, which I won't read because they're long, and I do ask that anybody on the town council that has a conflict of interest in this matter, refrain from voting, hopefully later on, on this deal. Thank you.
Okay, number four is Hesa Davis.
So obviously, I disagree with Olivia's version of events from last month, I look forward to seeing the video, I'd like to understand what she considers false. The IRS says, thanks, July 30th was National Whistleblower Day, that helped collect over $7 billion in fines and taxes from non-compliant payers, that doesn't include cases 23-0794 to 0797, settling against Ellison cohorts presumably still in process. $7 billion may not seem like much when our country goes $1 trillion into further debt less than 90 days each time, but every little bit helps, right? Think global, act local. On that topic, this council ignored the report on how to recover the DEM remediation costs, so you left taxpayers on the hook for that, well into six figures and still not closed. This one isn't as much, but now you've got the chance to do the right thing in a different area. A few months back, Olivia said the council couldn't have it both ways when it came to the building permit fees. Well, surprised, the inspectors have been having it both ways all along, ever since 2002. That's the year the ordinance was passed on building permit fees, which made Building Inspector DiFrancesco responsible for calculating the permit fee multiplier, which goes down when total town construction goes up. He's responsible for doing this updates annually, APRA response shows it never happened. By his own witness admissions, he's never done it. As a result, the town has collected more than 700K in illegal fees, and thanks to Exeter's unusual arrangement of paying the inspectors a percentage of the cut, about 160K in illegal collections went into Ron DiFrancesco's pocket. This is just the last six years, which is a statute of limitations for ethics filings. This goes back much further and likely totals more. A few months back, you were talking about solar permit fees, and I said you should put it in escrow because you'll probably have to give it back, and this is why. Just like planning board fees, it's now the subject of legal action, I have five permits affected, there are likely hundreds more. The town's schedule doesn't comply with the state statute schedule, which has been mandated compliance since 2017. Planning board meetings, building permits, impact fees, the same principle applies, if it's more than the cost, it's an illegal tax. This problem's been getting worse and worse. The multiplier was .0068 in 2002, should now be in the .008 range based on last year's construction values. It's eight times higher than it should be, which also means the inspectors are getting eight times more than they should be based on the same town ordinance. Coming back to whistleblowers, there's sections in the ethics code that makes retaliation illegal. I found that while researching today's filing. Olivia is currently under investigation, 2024-7. I wonder if that will come into play when we talk about APRA, since that's how all of the Ellis violations came about into light, which were signed under penalty of perjury. This town improperly and illegally collected well into the six figures on building permits. That money came from people, builders and residents of this town, just like the illegal planning board fee that was charged, you need to give it back and stop making plans.
Give them a copy of that. The next one, it looks like Sharon McLean. The next one, it looks like Sharon McLean.
Oh, no, I had nothing. I'm sorry. I signed the wrong paper. I grabbed the first one.
Wendy Fenner-Aubin.
Again, Wendy Fenner-Aubin, 37 West Shore, and I just want to make one comment. Don't take my picture.
I didn't have your picture.
No, but you took this gentleman's without him knowing.
You're on video right now.
That's all right. I just wanted to bring before the town council again the issue of the stone instrument wall at the end of the street. It's still not up, and I was, you know, I can't ask any questions, but I just wanted to put it back on your radar again because I haven't been here in six months. And yeah, I saw it. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Ernest Pulasco?
I wouldn't defer for now, would you?
Okay. The last one is, I can't make out Brian's last name, Brian?
Samson.
Brian Sampson?
Yes, hi. I'm still Brian Sampson. I have no axe to grind, okay? I moved into town five years ago with my wife. We built a house right across the street, very, very nice, very, very happy. It's the second house I've ever built, so I really didn't have any issues with it. I paid my permit, okay? I find out that there might be some monies coming back, okay? I don't know the formula at all, all right? But if there are some monies coming back, I would like it, okay? Which brings me to the second point. Not only did I pay my permit fees, no problems whatsoever, okay, but I also paid $5,000 impact fee, which to this day, I do not understand, okay? The $5,000 impact fee is for anyone who builds a new home in this town. You pay it before you get your building permit. It used to be you paid it before you got your certificate of occupancy, but they changed that, okay? In the beginning, when it came out with the regulations, it was going to go to education, okay? If it has to, where it goes in education, okay? But since then, it's been amended, so now it goes to Department of Public Works, okay? New vehicles, whatever they need, okay? There's also a thing in here that says that after eight years, you can get your money back, and it's never going to happen. It's never going to happen, okay? You might as well take that right up. We know that's not going to happen because you're always going to have enough money to spend it on, so there is no money left, okay? And secondly, this is a residential impact fee. Is it also a commercial impact fee, okay? I think not, okay? If it is, is it the same amount? Is it $5,000? And what is it for? New construction?
A lot more. So if you have been here for, I'm not even supposed to be talking back to you, but when this ordinance was rewritten, the vote was four to one, and I was the only guy that voted against that entire week.
I do know you, I remember that you said you, it's Exeter-West Greenwich, West Greenwich, which is a much bigger town, which has a police department and many other things that we have, do not have an impact fee. Why do we, okay? We're getting, no offense, but we're getting beat here, though, okay? That's it. So I want to know if there is a difference between what I pay for a permit and what it actually should be, all right? And if so, I'd like my refund, okay? Thank you.
Okay, next up is nine, new business, and we're going to take item B first, Department of Emergency Management, request for approval, emergency standing between towns, Exeter, West Greenwich, regarding multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation.
No, I'm sorry. I, G.
Oh, G, I'm sorry.
It's the Exeter rubbish.
I'm sorry. Okay, G. Charlie's old time drag, status license.
I placed that idea. Several, well, several people spoken to me about recycling, and there's an issue about separating recycling, recycling materials from regular trash. I happen to know it because I happen to be a customer, but I suggested that we ask someone from the company to come and tell us what's happening and what's the status. And I've had a nice conversation with this gentleman who says he will tell us about the trucks, so would you mind mirroring? And I wish I, is it Gary? No, I thought you'd forgotten your name, sorry.
Gary.
Oh. Gary. Tell us, yeah, give the council an update, and anyone else who might use you, Siri.
Last name is H O V F L I N G. You're welcome. So there has been an ongoing problem that started some months back. Well, let me go back first. I was brought here a year ago to help make an improvement in Charlie's rubbish. I live in New Haven, Connecticut, I went back and forth every day, so I'm dedicated to what I do. The place I came from has a beautiful recycling facility. I helped put that together and enforce it in the customers and towns that we were in. I came here to do the same thing, and I did that. It was a shambles when I got here. I changed it, and we were doing very, very well, until two very unfortunate things happened. We had a driver who was driving on Wood River Drive after a massive rainstorm and drove a $78,000 truck through four feet of water. I don't know if you know what happens when that occurs, but the engine, transmission, everything is destroyed. The next week, we were training a driver to fill in for the driver that I fired because of that, and he hit a tree about two miles from there. So the two trucks we had dedicated, there are smaller trucks that go up and down the driveways here in town, were gone. To this day, I still do not have those trucks back. And the reason that I don't is because parts, anybody who's into business, parts are hard to get, especially truck parts. We're also governed by DOT laws of hours of service. Not a lot of people know that, so we just can't take people that have already worked eight or 10 hours picking up your trash and have them go and spend eight or 10 hours picking up your recycling. So I had to make a decision, and that decision was, let me make sure we're getting the materials off the street until we could do something different. I'm here to report, we're very close to that. In fact, tomorrow, I'm picking up a check to take to the, we call it the water truck, to be able to get it and get it back into service. Once that happens, we will go back to the way we were prior to these two unfortunate incidents happening. Recycling means a lot to us. I have a really good team, but again, some things out of our control. Those individuals no longer work for us, and I expect within a week, and at very least two weeks, that this should all be going back to the way it's supposed to be.
I thank you for coming to speak, only because, well, I'm not the only one that had a question, and so it's good. And I know we've spoken to our DPW director, who indicates that it really is important for Exeter to have their recycling handled properly, so thank you. Did Rob any questions about this? Are you okay?
No, actually, I did speak with, it might even been you.
It was me.
And I called that I have video of the operation going on, and I said we can't have that there, and you did indicate that you are trying to handle it, get your arms wrapped around it. It's unfortunate, but hopefully it does get corrected because it's not a good practice, what's going on, and that's not what Exeter wants to be representing.
Of course, and I agree 100%.
Okay.
It's not being done intentionally. That's the most important thing for you folks to know. Yes?
I'm kind of missing a point here. What is the issue? Is there like garbage left around that's not getting picked up?
No, 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 it's, we are having in most parts of Exeter to mix trash and recycling. That's the issue. We're not leaving anything anywhere behind, it's just that we're mixing when we don't want to be doing it, you folks don't want us to be doing it, and it looks like we're coming to the end of that unfortunate incident from continuing.
And how many houses do you service, anything?
Mr. Sampson, I got to keep this going, I think it's.
I think it's important to the question.
He's not.
Okay. Any questions?
No, but I thank you.
Why? I mean, wait a minute, we heard, we heard all kinds of things going on, but it had nothing to do with the meeting. This has something to do with the meeting. I'd like to, I think we should be able to listen to the gentleman and answer and have his, have our questions answered.
Mr. Sampson, he's up here to address the council. Mr. Ellis requested him here. The public comment section's over. If it was a public hearing, I'd have you speak. I can't let everybody just raise their hand and start talking in a meeting. We'll be here for days, so.
Well, you let us raise our hands before to ask a question.
That was during public hearing.
No, that was before public hearing.
Dan, I'm just going to help you out just a minute. Do you know roughly how many customers you have at Exeter? That was the question.
I don't know any exact number, but I can always get that number. I can get it tomorrow.
Roughly?
About 800 to 1,000. We have the lion's share of the town.
I was going to say, I guess maybe any of the transfer station could do a helping, but that's a lot of people.
It is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you.
Number nine, new business, solicitors, license application, Trinity Solar LLC, 2211 Allenwood Road, Wall, New Jersey, Mitchell Bourbon, applicant, Free Johnson Court, West Water, Rhode Island. Is this individual here?
No, and they haven't fulfilled all requirements anyway.
Do we leave this on the agenda, or you're going to?
I think we'll just, people just let it go and see if they come through.
Is this the company that's already soliciting?
They're not. I talked to the guy, and they said they hadn't been soliciting here yet. They were working in other cities and towns. After that comment from the last meeting, I did talk to him, and he said, no, we're not next to you yet.
So there's another company that's soliciting?
So I'd say we just wait to see if they come through again.
Okay. Okay, now, item B, Department of Emergency Management, request for approval, emergency standing between towns, Exeter and West Greenwich, regarding multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. That was, have you requested Doris Boardman to put that on next month?
Yeah.
Okay, so we keep that one. C, town of Exeter, code ordinance, proposed amendments, Article 14, Building and Building Regulations, Article 2, Buildings, Division 2, Permit Fees, Section 14-51, Schedule of Fees.
So here is, there needs to be some additions to this ordinance, so I gave it to you. DeFrancesco needs to be consulted for changes that need to be made. Works in with that one.
I guess I'll call it.
Do you have that?
I'll call.
You have to go. No, I just tried to clarify. Yeah, we, I want, where do you go? Where do you go with this?
Can I see that one real quick?
Yeah. It's the, an existing ordinance that needs updating.
That's in my pile here somewhere. Okay. We'll leave that on. I'm going to hold it. All right. Item D, Department of Public Works awarding a bid, trade-in two 2012 F-550 dump trucks with standards for new units.
Good evening. As you might have seen, my recommendation was to go with the flood Ford bid. I did also recommend upgrading to the stainless steel dump bodies that were recommended, and I also recommend aluminum wind deflectors and the top systems for the spreader and floodlights on the back. I wrote the bids. There's a lot of items that I forgot. It's a very detailed thing. I missed the floodlights. They need them. But you'll notice that they offered $40,000 in trade-ins for our units. The next closest bid offered us $5,000 per unit. So in the offset from one place's trade-in value to the other, the $16,000 for the stainless steel bodies versus the steel, in my opinion, is already covered in there, and I could show you stainless steel spreaders in my yard and the very rotted dump trucks that used to hold them. So the stainless steel spreaders are fine, and there's a reason why they use this for that.
These weren't you doing with stainless bodies?
Yeah. So that's my recommendation, is to go with the full stainless steel aluminum wind deflectors and the floodlights for these two units, and also accept that $40,000 from Floodford for the trade-ins for the two vehicles.
I make a motion to award the bid of two trade-in two 2012 F-550 dump trucks with standards for new units from Floodford, also with the addition of stainless steel bodies and floodlights and deflectors for the tops. Can I get it all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second, any discussion?
Yeah, Dan, as your supervisor, you support the liaison to support this function.
Stainless bodies, absolutely.
Okay, well, just for the record, it's good.
I guess that when I was in there in the winter time after dealing with one of my trucks, and then I went into his shop, I felt better. Good for us, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Exeter, item F, Department of Public Works, request to use ARCA funds to purchase wooden brush chipper.
You skipped one. E.
You skipped one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
E.
E. Department of Public Works, request to ride West Greenwich 2024 bid for liquid biotransfer road paving.
Yes, good evening again. Yeah, I'd like to just be able to take advantage of the bid that West Greenwich, as you see within the packet, they did their due diligence with a proper bidding. We did use it before. We've got a fantastic number, and this is to do with the funds coming from the Rhode Island, ready, two-to-one grant program that we are receiving right now, and it will be going from the end of this season into next seasons, and it will be part of my, I'm using it to help build my bid for my capital program for the next season here, to get those numbers locked in. Thank you.
They'll have these locked in for next spring, too?
Yes. It says it right there on the contract.
I'll make a motion to allow the Exeter Public Works to ride on the West Greenwich 2024 bid for liquid biotransfer road paving.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I'd just like to just ask to make sure that this is totally legal with the bid process?
Yes.
That the state bid was correct.
I'm sorry, yes.
What was the company here?
T-Miozi.
Okay.
Yep, and we used them last summer to do one of our roads that we did. Fantastic company to work with.
Mike, that's a new change to the ordinance that we did with online a couple of years ago. It's allowed to piggyback with other communities or with state contracts, as long as they're on the list, and they are, isn't that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Jim.
The bids were all done through the correct process here.
Absolutely, and all the documents are there in my packet.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, item F, Department of Public Works, request to use ARCA funds to purchase one, a wooden brush chipper, two, mini activator with attachments, three, solar-powered LED waded crosswalk signs. Is that up there, Rob?
Yes, this is in, just in case that the ARCA money wasn't obligated by the time it timed out, I figured, let me put together some items that we could bring to the town that we could be using, it'd be helpful. One of them's a light for a crosswalk at Wawaloon School. It brought to my attention, this is a very dangerous spot, so if any, the most important one to me is those two lights, to be honest with you, but they all are, could assist me with keeping up with the town's work. Sorry.
Okay, any other questions from the council?
I mean, do we have the money to approve all through?
And you have money to approve all through?
So there is money in the ARCA funds, mainly, so the ARCA funds have to be obligated by the end of this year, and because of the lead time between council meetings, going out for bid, getting the bid approvals, and awarding it, basically, Rob is being proactive in having these bids ready. So the bids are there, and. So the bids are there and so that as time goes on, if funds are not obligated to other projects or other departments, this is ready to go. I, that was, that was the intent.
That's right. Thank you for helping me out there. I couldn't find the words, but she helped me out there.
Yeah, just like the, the issue with the excavator with the attachments, that one, he's been doing some research, trading one machine in which was, what did he?
Yeah, and since then, I had no choice to put that out into the field just because I was running behind. And I do have an operator that's making that thing really do some wonderful work. Now, what's terrible with that is I got one operator that's really good with it. And it's a massive machine, but it's doing a great job with the, in the right hands. So I'd have to do some more training, get somebody else.
You still up there whether it's going to be, depends on what you get for bids too, correct?
That's right.
So not only, this should be a request to use ARCA funds to purchase to go out to bid?
Well, this is like, like Marie had said.
It's got to go out to bid anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely. And these are all just like targets that, you know, somewhere around like, but the lights themselves, that's a.
The crosswalk wasn't a big number.
No, it wasn't, but that one to me, out of all these, is the one that I'd like to just get done because it needs to happen. And I'm just trying to find what source to purchase them from.
I was just saying, probably one of that one right now, it's only five thousand.
Five thousand, you have to get three written bids.
Well, this is thirty seven five, this is three thousand. Right, and that's, that's what I have for a quote for two units. That would be excellent. I'd have to get some more written quotes, but those are the targets. That's basically what I feel is needed there. And of course, we'd have to do some upgrades with the paint on the road to really make that spot light up. So, and that's what my intention is. And I could take it out of the D W's budget, but I figured this would be a good spot to maybe probably use some of those funds.
I'm going to make a motion to allow the Department of Public Works to lock the bid to use ARCA funds to purchase the model. One, a wooden brush chipper. Two, a mini activator with attachments. And three, solar powered LED lighting crosswalk signs. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Mrs. McLean. Come on out.
Aye. Well, this is a rerun from May. I think it's a May meeting when we touched about the Dupont Hill Trail that they were proposing. And I, just for a recap for people who don't know, there is a trail that exists right outside of the library. And it kind of makes an arc around, and we want to extend the trail a little bit further. So it goes around the, the cell tower. And, well, so I don't know if you want me to run through everything again. Best majority of the money, almost all of the money actually will be coming through a grant that we could apply for. And if we don't get that grant, we don't do the project unless the town wants to pay more, but I don't think so. So in any case.
Is that something you do?
We just have that library board meeting also. So you're anticipating that the library board will be the grant grant?
Be the.
Or the grant manager or the fiscal agent?
The grant managerial agent probably more so.
Yeah, and so when we had the discussion in the beginning, you just finishing up all construction work for last year. Because of the issue of working close to wetlands on this project and that's where a lot of the money will probably go to, Justin Anderson, we just felt that we weren't capable of doing.
Well, I'll tell you, we already had a wetland ecologist.
Understood.
Who already went out and definitely said, we don't, he said, we won't need permitting from the E M or anything for that.
But that's him saying, that's not a high consultant that would come back and work with the E M.
But that's one of the first things too that would be paid for by the grant is if we do need to have anything done, they would also take care of that.
It's just like, we would love to have a pathway back there. It's just that the board is not, we're not such kind of experts in this. We have to bring people in, saying, and Rob, it has to be involved. Who else knows, Rob, I'm not playing board. But it's the wetlands issue for us that we're just not.
We're going to make out the wood chips, wasn't it?
We were thinking with just, you know, could, the way the trails exist out there already, it's just natural. And it's all pretty well maintained by itself, you know, just looks like rain fog, years pull the crap out.
Basically, it's just proven some brush back.
It's actually, yeah, taken out actually a lot of what is the invasive plants, the, the autumn olive, I think they call it. And that's one to get rid of that for sure. And then it'll just sleep around where we're confident. Actually, I'm looking at the map right here that shows where the wetlands are. And we're staying clear of that.
This is the one you were asking about earlier?
Yes, it was, thank you. I got some other one too. And if you did want to see it, anybody else, yeah. I've got it all marked up with all the important points there.
Sharon, can I just say again, Sharon has spoken to me and I said, let's put it on the agenda because Sharon is Exeter's alternate representative to the Woodbook Ecotec Wild and Scenic River Water Shack. Sharon said, we just bow ourselves wild and scenic. And I said, well, that's okay. But they're looking for the grant and, and Mike, if it's, if they get it, then those issues, I guess, would have to be addressed with the.
Right, and I think the idea was that the library board has a fiscal agent because we do have a five oh one C three. And we're not comfortable as a board taking on responsibility for a project like this, like the wetlands. We go off and help it clear it, so I'm a bit, but it seems to be a bigger project than we consider. So if the planner was on board and reviewed it and he thought it was okay and it was, you know, we're just taking, following the, nothing about the ecologist or the wetlands guy you had, but he's not going to testify on behalf of the town when the E M comes back and there's issues.
Well, no, it's not going to be an issue of E M not knowing what we're doing. I mean, E M's a part of this whole process too.
The library board is not, doesn't have the technical expertise to manage this. The financial maybe, but the grant itself needs professional help. So that would be starting with the man.
Are you talking about the town planner? Okay. I can, the town planner, that's another problem for me.
Sharon, did you say there was a, was there an opportunity for this or not?
Yes, well, the grant, the request for proposals will be October first. And we have until the end of December to get a proposal in.
So you've got a couple of months to be able to.
Right, but what we know, have to have first is approval by the town. Otherwise, they won't accept a proposal.
I know Sharon had told me that Rob looked at some locks and things.
Yes, that was the last time.
And here he is.
Right.
But so, but if there's other issues with the board, then that means.
The board doesn't know, it doesn't have the expertise.
No, I understand, I hear you.
So include that wood.
Did you know about this? The, the Temple Trail?
I haven't made it back there because I'm doing pavement preservation projects, which is my priority right now. But I do intend on checking it out and.
Well, yeah, you raised the issue about the boulders being a hazard.
It is.
We're designed as well clear of the boulders because those boulders are right next to the.
Eventually, they'll be crushed and then be put into town roads and stuff. It's material sitting there until we can get some crusher lined up. So. But because they're so loosely stacked is my fear, kids climbing on it and one could shift and pinch and it'd be a hell of a spot to get a rest, you know, help in there.
That exists right now. That, that concern should exist right now because anybody could walk into that area.
It's true.
Okay, so I should talk with the town planner?
I believe if the town council approves it, then I'll bring it back to the board and be the fiscal agent for it.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the project.
Well, second, second motion.
Would the plan also involve?
Yeah, would the planner consult and moving to consult and moving it forward.
All right, great.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
Ah, Stony Lane. Two thousand nineteen.
Again, Dan, I placed this on the agenda because of the discussion that has surfaced particularly at the last meeting of the council. And you will recall that I presented to the council a letter, a statement really, from the assessor regarding the need to address Stony Lane and its abandoned section because she did an inquiry from an attorney. So that's what I did. And I discovered that the very next day, Mr. Davis went to the assessor to question the genesis of that inquiry, which I made it clear to you that it was because of an attorney visiting her. So I placed that on the agenda because Carrie and I, the assessor, talked about that. And I said, well, I know that we abandoned, not abandoned, I'm sorry, we accepted Kayla Ritchie a couple of years ago, entered with all the work Dan, that you did and the highway supervisor. So it seemed like that also was an issue that ought to be addressed. So the people that live on Kayla Ritchie know that they live on an approved road. And by the way, I don't know the, I don't know the developer. I don't know anybody that lives there. I did place a call to the Ethics Commission today, spoke to investigator and said, I have a couple of items on the agenda tonight. So I wouldn't be surprised if there won't be another ethics complaint filed against me. So I'm just telling you that I understand, even though I've been advised not to bring up anything with regard to anything Mr. Davis has said or done. But I, I think given, given the fact that there was an ethics complaint filed, a lengthy one, filed against Mr. Millar related to the Stony Lane abandonment, I just think you ought, I think you ought to know what happened. I mean, this was part, this is part of my own, no, by the way, I suggested to the ethics investigator today that with that complaint, if there's any question I can answer, any help I can give, because I know I mentioned peppered throughout. So I just, I just would like to give you the information about the public hearing that was held because, I mean, this is, this is important. So if you could just take copies, this is in two thousand nineteen. So I've got some copies there for you. And, and I'm sorry, again, I don't mean to pursue it other than the fact that it was brought up, a major ethics complaint filed. And yes, I guess I'm a little sensitive since, since my name appears in concert with the filing. So I just want you to address, if I could, address this. First, first last month on July first, this was a public comment. Mr. Davis, Beetham Hill Trail, spoke in regards to the abandonment of Stony Lane. Mr. Davis states, Mr. Millar gained land from the closure of the road. Mr. Millar is trying to sell his development rights. Mr. Davis claims by the gain of his, this land, his sale will be higher. And Mr. Millar is in conflict. Now, I don't know anything about any plan that Mr. Millar has to do with his property. I don't think any of you do. I know I don't. It had nothing to do with the genesis of my placing that item on the agenda. And I think you ought to know that because, well, this is number four, is a communication you've already received. And I've, I've removed it only because I want to speak to it. And you had probably read some of it. And here, this, this again is a message to the council. I did make an allegation, this is dated July fifth. I did make an allegation, which I later retracted with the Ethics Commission. Hereby retract with the council that Mr. Millar gained property from the abandonment. This was based on the assumption that the gate placement was properly legal. However, based on that his statement, I went out to measure, it is not. And then it goes on to speak to Matchjack placing a gate near Millar's property line, three hundred feet short of the road end. This triggered a revision, an extension of the ethics complaint. Mr. Millar stated, it goes on and on, since this improper placement blocks access and use of a public road. And I was not aware of this at the time I wrote it. Since corrected the ethics filing, but this raises significant higher ethics issues. It appears no one else is in town is aware of it either, except perhaps Mr. Ellis, Mr. Millar, and Mr. Matchjack. I don't know anything about the gate placement. I never went, I never saw it, I didn't have anything to do with where it was placed. But he suggests to you that I do something about it. And I would like you to know, and I hope you believe me, I knew nothing about any of the process. Now, that's, that's July fifth. That's dated July fifth. But, but if in the same communication, you have a copy of submission to the Ethics Commission, you know what the date is? July fifth. So on that very same day that we received this communication, here, here is a communication. This is all the ethics complaint, by the way, all of this. You've seen it, probably like me, you would pass it by. But this is about what was on last month's agenda. It's about an abandoned road. It's about a map that isn't accurate. And here's the summary of this complaint. With the assistance and complicity of fellow ethics violators, Stephen Matchjack with a citation and Calvin Ellis with another citation. You may remember that that citation has to do with the Washington County Regional Planning Council, of which I was a director, but I was always appointed here as a representative. Never used the word director, but, you know, I, I didn't tune into that. My mistake, I should have known. Failed to recuse himself, oh, stopped Millar's, repeated and intentionally will for participation and failure to refuse himself properly for conflict of interest and potential personal gain in regards to the Stony Lane abandonment helped him realize an estimated personal property gain in the range of sixty-three to one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars based on current assessed value. So it either helps him because it was the way the gate was placed and, and he acquired more property from the abandonment of the road, which by the way, didn't happen. Or it didn't because the same day, he told you that was an error. Now, now perhaps I'm, I'm not representing this correctly. I think you can gather this, it's a lack of, total lack of mutual respect between myself and Mr. Davis. But I want you to see the summary. You have copies of this, but I just wanted to point it out to you for the record, if I could. Now, now you see please in front of you, the public hearing.
I just have to interrupt, I don't know why he has to laugh at all this stuff.
Well, because he, don't worry about it.
It's funny to you, this is funny to you.
No, don't worry.
This is a joke?
No, it doesn't, don't, no, Mike, don't. He can't, but he fully knows what it is, it's okay. it's okay. Now, this public hearing of June 3rd, 2019, you, you see on the very first paragraph, minutes of the council's regular meeting of the prior month, May 6th, and here, here are the minutes of the meeting. New, new business, Stony Lane issues, fires, flooding, dumping, partying, consideration and possible action, closure, abandonment. "Mr. Andrews, Public Safety Liaison, received a call from Chief Scott Gabbett, who expressed public safety concerns regarding Stony Lane. Notice, there's no reference to Scott Millar, it's public safety issues." You probably remember this, Dan, you were sitting, you were sitting together. "Mr. Andrews met with Chief Gabbett, Public Works Director Machcheck, a nature conservancy rep, an abutter, Scott Millar, and Council Assistant Ken Finley. Kids often party in the woods, sometimes 50, 60, or 70 at a time, setting fires and leading them to solder. The fire department has responded several times to fires and once for possession of drug overdose. Section in question is not easily accessed, especially by fire apparatus. Tow trucks cannot access the area, and a abutter recently used his tractor to help pull someone out." That abutter, I'm quite sure it's not Mr. Millar, but. "It is a serious situation, a problem waiting to happen. Best option is to abandon the road, close it off, to protect, to protect public safety." Now, I read that to you, folks, would you realize, because this gentleman wasn't there, and I wanted to speak to Olivia about this as well. Notice, there's no reference to gaining property here, the reason was because of the serious issue. And, and Chief Gabbett thanked us.
And I've been through there, if I'm interrupt, I've been to that spot that you referred to.
You know it.
To tow someone out who called me at 9:30 at night to go down there and tow him out with Mikey because of the water that was there, in, in that area that you mentioned.
Oh.
So, I know the area to talk about.
So, you, you know what I'm speaking about. Well, it, it goes on here, here. "A rep for the nature conservancy was present, indicated they are in agreement with the closure and so forth," mentions Ken Finley here next. Motion made, and this is what I find interesting, because remember, I was recorded to the Ethics Commission here as being complicit? Well, you must perhaps think I was, and I want you to know, no. And I'll tell you why. "Motion made by Mr. Andrews to schedule a public hearing regarding a possible closure and abandonment, abandonment of Stony Lane on the council's regular meeting agenda of June 3rd," which is, which are the minutes of that hearing that I just gave you. Agenda seconded by Mr. Khan, you probably don't even know Mr. Khan. Is that Mr. Ellis, who seconded the motion to clo, no, you don't, don't say it.
Michael Khan.
It's not me.
Michael Khan, was he, he was the councilman, yeah.
Mike Khan, who sat here before, yes, he sat here, voted unanimously and the affirmative. Now, that brings us to the minutes of meeting that I, that I just gave you, and, and that's a public hearing that was held on June 3rd, 2019, and, and it refers back to the, the minutes of this meeting that I just cited. And there are questions here, you've got it, I gave, I've given you a copy. What, what I find interesting, though, is that there is discussion of GPS, and I, and I know this is why I think it's probably important that some action be taken. I don't know, I don't use GPS to travel through Exeter, I know where I'm going, but I suspect there are people who don't. I've heard stories of people that have led down some dead-end dirt roads with through by GPS that hasn't been updated, which was one of the reasons that I think, Harry, if not the main reason, brought it to my attention. In any case, motion made by Mr. Andrews, and you've got the minutes here, motion made by Mr. Andrews to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Khan, motion made by Mr. Andrews to order the abandonment of that portion of Stony Lane, and, and to declare, decree, cease to be useful, it was seconded by Mr. De Gregorio. I, I don't find where I'm complicit in this process, but I will tell you this, I was chair or president of the town council at the time, so I guess I sat here. I didn't make the motions, I did vote yes on the motion to abandon. So, you see, you've got statements on July 5th, that the, that the issue about Scott Millar, and by the way, we, we, tonight, tonight, you approve minutes of last month's meeting. Here's the public comment, Asa Davis said that Mr. Millar gained land, remember, I guess I repeated myself through the closure, but he's now recognized that he didn't. But, it's said, and once it's said, it's out there. So, I'm glad there are some other folks here tonight that listen to me and understand that I wasn't complicit in any of it.
Well, that was really, really met luck, it's fantastic.
No, thank you for listening. And, and the reason I, I make this issue, and the reason I bring this to your attention is because we addressed it last month, because there's a huge ethics complaint that's been filed against Scott Millar, who served, and this is public, so excuse me when you think I'm betraying some secret, it's public record, he's given years and years of his service. We, we did not, we did not appoint him last month, I think it was just last month, but now he is the recipient, if you will, or victim, or whatever you want to call it, of the target of this ethics complaint. That's why I called the inspector today and said, "Please, pass the word on, if I can be of any help, I'm happy to be of some help." I don't know what help I can be, other than, I didn't have anything to do with the closing. I never attended the meetings at the site, and that's what happened. So, I wanted you to know, because you have August Communication Number Four, and like most of them, you perhaps just placed it aside and piled it up with all the rest. But I took a few minutes.
Oh, sure, in one.
Well, I sure, I just took a few minutes, and when I saw that, it seemed like I wanted to address it, which is why I put it on the agenda for tonight. Thank you for your patience, council.
Okay. Item J. Access public records.
I'm sorry.
Question process.
Okay, I'm almost done. I'm almost done, and I'll tell you what happened. I came in here on or about July 17th. I often stop in, I check often with a clerk, I pick up what's waiting for me in our mailbox. I found a clerk in, in some state of, oh, I don't know, I'll call it tizzy, it sounds like an old country word, and I said, "Lynn, what, Lynn, what's up?" She said, "I just, I just crafted and sent out another request to, to Asa Davis." I said, "Oh, like what, another APRA request?" I said, "Well, well, like what, you know, what's happening, what do you mean?" She said, "Well, there are a lot of them." And I said, "Well, how many of them?" She said, "Well, last month, which was June, just 23 in the month of June, APRA requests."
Twenty-three APRA requests in one month?
In one month. That's what she said.
From what person?
From Mr. Davis. Maybe Lynn spoke, I don't think so, I think she was keeping accurate records. I'm not, sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Lynn, and I don't mean to make you uncomfortable, but you were uncomfortable the day I came in here, I don't know if you remembered that. So, we spoke about it, and I said, "Well, what is this accumulation, an accumulation?" And she said, "Well, yeah, I've actually had to tally them up, and, and in the last five years since 2019, there have been 193 APRA requests made of, through the town clerk for public records by Mr. Davis." Now, clearly, he's interested in a lot of what's been going on here. In fact, last Monday, you may recall, but you were not here, Dan, he indicated, "We need a town administrator so there can be an adult in the room." So, clearly, we're really not of that effect. Maybe Diane, he's never really said anything about you, Diane, so I guess you're the grown-up there. In any case, I said, "But, but, but Lynn, what kind of an answer do you give?" I said, "I wonder if I can even look at it." And, and I said, "Well, gee, is it, is it public record? Are these public records?" And she said, "I think so, but, well, let me make an APRA request." So, I did. And I, I just, I don't know that you've seen it, I don't think you have, why would you have? But, I started reading, I started reading, and it says, "Please, to Asa, thank you, thank you for your communication." I said, "You really thank him?" Because I'm actually a little frustrated, but anyway, as the designated rep, here's, this has come to my attention. "In pursuant to the APRA excerpt, apparently taken, your communication reports to be blah, blah, blah. Please be advised that the APRA is the public's right to access to, to public records and set, to, and to facilitate public records, to access public records." Otherwise, and then I have to ask you for the record, have you been told in any way, in any case, that APRA requests are not public, and the public have access to those? Have you been told that we can? Because I, I did pose a question, and, and an attorney reached out to the AG's office today to ask that question, but, but I think I can have access to what you gave me, but, but I filled out an APRA request just in case, so I, I filled out the APRA request, and, so, so the answer is what intrigues me most. It does not, the APRA does not require a public body to reorganize, consolidate, or compile data that is not maintained in the form requested, nor does it require a public body to respond to inquiries, answer questions, or conduct research upon request. It is the requestor's responsibility to frame requests with sufficient particularity to enable the searching agency to determine precisely what records are being requested. Now, I mean, I read this when Lynn handed it to me, sounds extremely professional, but I'm not surprised, because Lynn, you may know her prior career was, was manager to a law office in Providence, so it did not surprise me that she'd written this. "I cannot accordingly interpret or respond to excerpts from the Ethics Commission or any other public body. Such an exercise would require me to make a series of conclusions and assumptions that go beyond the scope of a recognizable APRA request. However, with respect to discernible requests, I respond as follows." Now, so, most of our responses are, "See response number one, see response number one." But, response number one is fascinating, because here's what it says. "Please see introduct, introductory comments. This request does not specify, quantify, or identify the agenda's minutes or records that you seek. I cannot identify records which you may believe might support the Ethics Board's comment that the planning board's, the planning board determined that the rural residential compound ordinance should be revised and updated by way of amendment." Now, I'm not follow, I've not followed this planning board issue, but in any case, obviously, Mr. Davis is. "When I asked you to specify, your response was, 'Talk to Bill.'" Now, I don't understand, when I see the, the form in which we, we request an APRA, here's the APRA request, when do you write on here, "Talk to Bill, talk to a planner to get the information that I'm looking for?" I didn't think it was appropriate. So, I'm reading it, and, and it goes on to say, "Any and all planning board agendas, minute, records referenced are available for your inspection, we all know best." And then, request number two says, "Refer to my answer here." Number, request number three, "Refer," and a response, and so forth, I'm not authorized, and it goes on. And I said, "Gee, gee Lynn, what, what, what are you thinking?" And she said, "Well, I'm thinking I've got several more of these, and they're even longer than the request that I'm answering here." So, to finalize this concert, this conversation, I came here Thursday, had a couple of questions for Lynn, but I was told that Lynn was working from home, which is of course permissible when one needs to. She's working at home on minutes and APRA requests. So, in my opinion, this, this is a bit excessive. Apparently, it will continue, because this seems to be a practice that's, I guess it's even getting, when I, Lynn showed me a multiple-page request, and maybe those could be, maybe those could be brought down a bit, maybe they could be, me, be reduced to something that's more manageable so that Lynn can move on with other work that she needs to do. And I don't think I have anything else to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know whether anybody, you know, if anybody, of course, Mr. Davis might have something to say, I don't know whether anybody else does or not, but.
A public comment, that's not on the agenda.
No, I know it's a public comment, but sometimes when, when people have questions, we, we answer them.
Item K, American Baptist Convention of Rhode Island Property Sale, and I just canceled conference session.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry, I think this is it. Reason I placed this on the agenda, or maybe it's not, let's just, Lynn, stop laughing. Anyway, I placed this on the agenda because I had a call from Sharon, wait, did Sharon leave?
No.
No Sharon, Sharon. And I, I had seen this piece in the paper, Appquarie, the American Baptist, by the way, there's a correction, it's not Lynn's fault, it's American Baptist Churches of Rhode Island. Lynn, my fault, because when I gave you the item, you said, "What is that, Ken, for?" And I said, "Oh, convention, because that's another story." And we've all seen subsequently the newspaper article and, and other bits of information that have come to our attention, that Appquarie is, wants to divest itself of some pretty beautiful property at Camp Canaanicus, and you know about it, you know where it is. I, I, don't shake your head, I don't.
I have a 50-acre piece of land between me and them.
Okay, you, you like it?
I want to speak.
Well, you, well, you can speak, but I don't want to see it used for, excuse me, utility, scale, solar, or other uses, when I think it probably could represent a very nice preserve for public use. And so, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, or if you're aware of it, but it's a beautiful piece of property, though I haven't visited it, I know people who have. Have you?
Yes, actually.
Have you?
I go there all the time.
You do?
Yes.
Would you like to preserve it, or?
Of course, we, we.
Good.
In fact, I've talked to the executive minister to make some suggestions. One of them was maybe land development, working with DEM, development rights.
Oh, okay.
She has, you've been working with DEM on some.
I thought you meant develop, I was then.
No, no.
Okay, I didn't think that's what you meant, but.
No, to sell or develop.
Right.
So, now you maintain the property, and they could continue on. She suggested that she has been working with them, but it probably is not going to happen, she really cannot afford to keep that.
Okay.
And we do have a meeting, because I learned about it a while ago, because we are, Liberty Church is a member of, you know, and so we are having a meeting on August 22nd.
Just let me say that I placed it on the agenda because I have a thought, and my thought is that this council, I would like to see this council take a position that we, that we, which is to direct our clerk to write to Appquarie and ask that they take every, any step, whatever steps possible to preserve the land so that it is, is available for, as a preserve for public use, something other than, other than other kinds of development. And I, I think that Appquarie, as you said, you've talked with them, there may be nothing that they can do. On the other hand, there may be, there may be entities out there that, that maybe somebody's interested.
They also have a big problem with repairing the van, which is going to cost.
Well, they already fixed the payment, that was, they finished that.
Yeah.
That was, that cost a lot of money, so.
They kind of wiped them out.
I'd like to say. I'd like to say for the record that my family on my mother's side helped to construct Cheston Hill Baptist Church. I say this because I was a member for very many years. I am afraid that somehow that can relate back to the fact that if I'm making a motion here tonight, it might make its way to the Ethics Commission, that I have some connection to the Baptist Church. I know I'm exaggerating, but we've got somebody around who does. So my motion is going to be that we direct the clerk to write to Appquary on behalf of the council and urge them to consider any possible opportunities to preserve the property in its current state.
I probably will have to abstain from that because.
Because you, because you have a connection. So she's got a connection, but I don't.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Good. Sharon, Sharon, you and I spoke.
Yes.
I mean, she's the one who asked me to place it on the agenda, but do you think I've covered what I should have said?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, one thing I will say, the watershed.
The water.
Oh, she's, see, she, she's, the reason she called is because she's got that, um, wild and scenic thing going on with the wood, wood fort, the town and there are rivers there. I mean, I think she had mentioned there could be connections there. I think there may have a lot of opportunities. There may be a lot of opportunities. Anyway, does that motion make sense to you?
All in favor?
Aye.
I agree with yourself.
Oh, I hope, I don't think there's anything. I don't think.
Okay. Next up is town website issues.
Oh, it's kind of.
Well, it's on me because I heard that there's been issues with it. The, um, the company that designed the website did an update a couple of months ago. And ever since they did, they're not pushing out the notices. They were pushing them out if you signed up with email, email address before the update. So every time I would post or somebody else would post a meeting, that would get posted, pushed out to everybody's email that had signed up. We did the update and that fell off the bandwagon. And James, our IT director, has been trying to get them to fix that. Couple of weeks ago, I told him, cut our losses, get a new website. Um, but he's still trying to get them to work on it. They may be, may be migrating us over. Cause we were munico, they got bought out by Civic Plus. So they may be migrating us over to Civic Plus. That was the last, end of last week. I was meeting with them to discuss that possibility. But that's where it's broken because they did an update.
And similar people in the last couple of weeks have spoken to me about the fact that they used to get minutes and, not minutes, I'm sorry, agendas, agendas and, and agendas that you don't get, well, that's, that's what we're speaking to here. And, and I guess it always used to happen. I don't know because I ain't got a paper copy because I, I work here, I don't work here, but you know what I mean? I'm here. But other people that want to know, people said, we don't know what's going on. I said, well, they gets posted, Lynn confirmed that it's posted right at, the agendas are posted right after they're posted with the Secretary of State's office. But I've also spoken to James only because you told me that, and I said, James, please help us. And he said he is, and he thinks by September, maybe you'll know more.
Even though they're not getting pushed out to the emails, they are on the website. They are on Secretary's Day, they're posted locally.
Right. Which is what I told people, but they, they were used to being notified and, and maybe that was a service that was really well beyond, you know, above and beyond what you could have done or should have done, but.
Well, the new website had the options, so we used it. The old website, we couldn't push out.
Oh, but now the new one could and now you can't. Does that make sense to everybody? She tried, but she can't. Oh, I hope that the next one, no, the next one isn't.
The next, thank you, page, multi-purpose community facilities. And we had a meeting, it was in June, where we wanted to go through the facility. And at that time, I voted against it because we didn't have all the information. And the more information we're getting, this is turning into, it's going to cost, right now it's turning into a state mandate, but we're going to shell out money until you get this grant, if you get this grant, which with their, with their, I'm not even going to call them requests, I'm going to call them demands at this point.
Mandates.
Well, what they're doing now, and what caught my eye is about two and a half, three weeks ago, I was in here looking through that one attachment, because Lynn asked me, what does this mean? And, uh, and when I looked at it, I started laughing. And, uh, my page here. When you go on this page here, CPF Community Learning Center Municipal Grant Update, and this is, we've signed this paper, over to you, want the money? And here we go. Next step, October 31st, 2024, you need capital, project schedule, work budget, project timeline due to PRO, early submissions are encouraged. And I'm like, right now, the way the construction industry is, private sector couldn't do that, what they're requesting. That was one issue. Well, what really got my eyes is item O, where they want us to change a resolution from the financial town meeting in July, that was done in June 2023. And they want it worded to where the voters put it down as, just that, Cal, bear with me. It specifically says the purchase was for a new town hall. They want that resolution changed. And as you go through it, that's why I had all this printed up. You're looking at all this pricing and, and talking to her with the ARPA money, you're going to be throwing away a lot of money and you'll never meet this. This one you will never, ever meet. It will be hard for us to meet this for December. And, uh, so what I want to do is put out a motion to revisit this because the way this whole program works, you read through all their notes and that, back by the US Treasury. So what I want to do is put out a motion to place the question of whether to rescind the vote of June 17th, 2024, which approved the summer war agreement binding between the state of Rhode Island, acting via through its pandemic recovery office and the town in Exeter at the next meeting. Because we have to notify these people, what we're going to do. So, so that's my first motion.
And guess what, Dan?
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay.
And I will second it and want discussion quickly.
Yep.
I talked to a lot of people this morning, some, and, and they're, they're, yeah, it would be great to go for it, but also it's, it's issues.
Personnel, we don't have the funding. And me and Ken were talking, that email number two, now it's down to only seven cities and towns. Ken, he works in state government. He thinks, the one comment he had, one of his discussions is, they're trying to take all this money and give it to somewhere else. So, so that was my first motion. Do we have a second on that? He seconded it, yeah.
Yeah. And you know what? Just another, another issue. That woman that recently, Maria Lynn, that was, you know, not for nothing, but for the record of this group that we are possibly and likely turning down that grant, I would think it, I'd love to see the lady come here and ask the questions here at the council table that they've asked, that have gotten answers that, or, or what you say that, come on, we can't do it. We'd like to do it. As Mike said when he made motion, and I don't know if he's going to vote on this, but, uh, but when he made a motion, how can you turn it away? Well, I've spoken to Maria, others, I've said things to Lynn before. You don't want to turn it away, but if it's impossible to, to make, uh, they, they make it right, then maybe we don't need to go down that road.
Well, like when you read it, it's backed by US Treasury, they're watching them, but it's almost like, I don't know, there's probably, it's on, it was seven minutes left. They probably had something already sitting in, in the works, waiting for funding to where they could pop it right out. And they also have.
I, I understand.
So that was my first motion. So we're in a second. I need a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the second one, this one here, I'll make a motion to move that the clerk notify the relevant state authorities of this action, invite them to attend or communicate their position and advance their offer. And I move to instruct all relevant town offices and departments not to request or accept any state funds pending the town council's further decision on the motion to rescind.
Second.
We don't want any money in between.
No, we wouldn't get it, not from the grant.
You never know how the state of Rhode Island works. Calvin, because I asked Maria if she got any money.
You know, she won't accept any.
The way they do it is they electronically transfer.
It would be directed positive.
Well, Maria, yeah, stop it.
We haven't got. So that's a motion.
Yeah, but we haven't got it yet, but what you got to get tomorrow.
No, we have to request it.
We have to actually request, we have to actually request it. You can request it in increments or months.
Yeah, no, I, I, I kind of made it a little.
You will not request. You worry that they might.
And I always don't understand, but I understand.
When they first come up, because I've done government contracts in the past, I can remember one job I did with USDA jobs by, and we're either, because I'm from the harvest community, so I'd like to be in my shoes. Every time Congress meets, the rules change. Yep. About that was my motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That one was easy. Now, you find my agenda again. Compensation for administration of the pandemic recovery grant.
This was Olivia.
Excuse me?
This was Olivia.
Okay. But now you've done work, she's done work. Have you guys been paid for what you've done so far? Or reimbursed?
So this, I spoke to Olivia. I don't think this is relevant right now. I think we can take it off the agenda.
Okay.
Remotes?
Okay. So item O, community facility grant, request by Office of Pandemic Recovery, we can do away with that? Do?
Well.
We're not going to, that has to do with changing the.
I think they're going to be asking me tomorrow, because I told them, I put them off till, you know, now, because they wanted an answer. We met with them on June night. They wanted me to answer them by the end of the week. And I said, Marty, not happening.
We're not changing the resolution.
Not happening. The council reviews it on August 5th.
They're not taking action.
Yeah, we aren't doing anything.
Do you need a formal vote on that, Jill?
If you wish. I mean, otherwise it's just noted that there was no action.
There's no action, too.
Just put no action tag.
Okay. Okay. Good. Number 10, unfinished business, town treasurer, request for clarification, area compensation of board canvases members for training.
So I have, um, I'm compiling other cities and towns, what they do with their board of canvases, how they structure and how they compensate them, but I don't have everybody's, so I'd like to put this off to next month, if that's possible.
Before we do that, I, I have your, your letter from July 1st that you said in it, would it be better to pay them from the non-union clerical hourly rate of $16.95? Is that what you're referring to, this hand?
Yes.
Is that something that might make sense to, to the council?
Um, I think at that time, um, I was asked to see what other cities and towns are doing and I'm compiling a spreadsheet, so.
It might work, but.
It might work. It might work, but maybe council would be curious. Maybe council would be curious to see how other cities and towns handle their board of canvases and see where, you know, kind of part of, above, below. If you want to wait, I mean, that's up to you.
Well, I think it's up to council. Want to wait? Wait. Okay. Ready for boss number two to get the answer. Thank you. Two. On two, three. On my time, he's one. We're going to wait for her to get some more information, so.
We're continuing now.
Okay. B, update the town of Exeter Code of Ordinance's Chapter 14, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 4, impact fees.
So I played on, um, have it here for next one where it's going to be on the agenda being introduced first and then, um.
Who'd that guy got, South Carolina or North Carolina?
That's Virginia. So my only information, I kind of, I talked and, uh, going back to what the consultant, several questions, and I think he had the information and his support, what we want to do.
Okay.
He was asking the commercial.
So we'll do that on there.
Yep.
Okay. C, status, welcome sign, again, out of town.
Same.
I'm going to get robbed of.
Okay. D, director of, request for guidance, incident of five west shore road.
Um, this is my next highest priority.
Mrs. Auburn, that was just in here. You did.
Yeah, I did. I chased her out to let her know that pavement preservation process, one of them, the most biggest one, should end tomorrow, but the rain might push it out. That is the next, I'm there within the next week.
Damage to town property, male road. You want to address that, Jim, or you want?
Sure. I, as council directed, I, after speaking with Rob, wrote a letter, um, to the, uh, construction company that did the damage, also the property owners, also the developer, advising that they needed to respond to Rob and to fix the damaged road. We told them to do that immediately. Asked Rob last week, nothing, no response. I asked him today, no response, nothing. So I suggest we wait until 30 days is up in, uh, next week. I don't know what the council wants me to do, whether you want me to file suit, whether you want me to just follow up with a, with a follow up communication to see what I'm actually planning on addressing this. But we wrote the letter as directed, there was no response yet. Twenty-four days out from the day my letter went out. And it went out certified.
Okay. I have a question on this.
Yeah.
Okay. I've seen that here.
Yeah.
I went by a bunch of times, I've always read it out. Stupid question. Is this damage enough worth all this time? I, I, in my layman's opinion, it didn't look that bad.
Right. And it, it's a hundred, they, they moved 50 ton machinery on that road. So what you're not seeing is the fragmented parts that I believe happened underneath the surface, on top of the, the, the top surface that is removed and you can see down layers. So I, I believe in that 100 foot, we're not looking for more or less, I'm looking for that targeted spot to one of our best roads, one of our newest roads in this town. And believe me, I, I got residents were furious about this situation because they know how beautiful that road is.
And that road can heal them, full-size trucks.
Absolutely. There's no doubt about it. But when you're track machines, I'm talking hard forestry, track machines twisting, they put a half inch piece of plywood on there and it just busted right through it. But, but, but that's what you see. I believe it's fragmented underneath. That's going to pop up in years to come and you're going to be like, oh, you got potholes on that road and it shouldn't happen.
Let's do it. I just had to ask.
I'm just saying that I believe it's worse than what you can see.
Okay.
Just the amount of weight and the tonnage that.
But now I'm curious, please, yeah, if I can ask, these, these trucks that are traversing male roads, are they not, that's not going to that work site?
It's exactly going to that work site.
It's, it's not the trucks that hurt the road. They were taking.
Track machine, forestry equipment.
Not the excavators, the forestry equipment, it has browsers, that I own it. That's what tore the road up. It wasn't the trucks. It had to be equipped.
Right.
But the trucks that people have spoken to us about are going to that site.
They are. And, and, no, it's not just there. You see them going right through. It's a cut through.
All right.
I'm trying to reach out to the owner of the property because I know the husband's being, he lives, they back and forth from Florida.
I mean, I, I put out the response, well, I want to cut out and remove at least.
That's what I told you, that was, on the side, at least 50, 60 foot in either direction. It's like, they just bought an asphalt plant, I think.
That's what I mean. It shouldn't take much for them to just cut it out, remove it and, and just put it back in there and then we will pavement, it should last the same as the rest of the roadway. I think it's ruined under there.
Yeah. Okay. We're on a count. We're on a count. Uh, status, RRI 250 commission, Exeter Historic Preservation Commission.
Katrina left, she has to.
Nothing new, Sheila?
No, just ongoing planning.
Okay. Okay. F, status, town building uses and improvement, improvement plans? 675 10 Rock Road, awarding a bid roof replacement? Do you know which company came in here and went up inside the attic and walked?
I believe it's the one that.
The one that wants.
Recommended, because he's seen the spaces in the decking, and it's the only way he would be able to do it.
The only one, that's what I think it is.
That's right.
Too, because he's the one that fit it with replacing the, the.
The wood, right. What do they call it, though, sheeting?
Yeah, plywood sheeting.
Which one was, was that RTP?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, the only one is, what I was going through, Rob?
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, it was your recommendation, I'll.
Give me one second, I just gotta find it.
You want this one?
I don't need it.
I got mine.
I have it right here, Mike, thank you. So, yeah, the, I was gonna, my recommendation is RTP roofing, uh, so there's a couple of reasons, actually. The the price is almost, it's $300 less than its nearest competitor. They're gonna install a new layer, half-inch CDX plywood, 30 sheets, none of the other ones mentioned. They're doing all the, what do you call it, the slopes, the slope angles, they're just putting a half-inch over it.
I believe that's the one where they replace some of the siding too, is that it?
Yeah, absolutely, that's my next point, they're talking, they're addressing the whole package. They're using a 50-year shingle, the next nearest one is doing a 50, 50-year coring, which I, that, how do you say the coring? Which I know is a phenomenal product, we we put that on the library, but it's a 50-year shingle, it's a 50-year shingle. And the only way the warranty works on a 50-year shingle is they do the decking, and that's why he's doing it. So, I I don't know, plus fixing the siding, I called two, uh, two out of the three references I spoke to, one of them is like, uh, he's doing an 80-unit roof apartment system, like they're they're like, the guy's great, his, he's, uh, anything, he says very few mistakes were made, but he came and fixed it right away. And then this other Realt guy, uh, he's he's used them for several, several years, and they, says they're excellent company to work with. So, that's why, that's why I arrived at that, Bill looked into it real deep, his carpentry backed up ground for me, so.
And that was RTP?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, if we are to award it to them, like, anything we do, like they, all of them gave copies of an insurance certificate that showed that their liability expires on 9/19/2024, their rep will, I'm sure, be renewed, so I'll make a motion to RTP roofing. The contract, the bid for, I just had the piece, got it backwards.
Forty-five, three hundred?
I got my notes on the back, I'm sitting there trying to get the front figure. RTP roofing for the sum of $45,300. Stipulation when we enter into a contract would be up-to-date insurance certificates, name of the town, Exeter, as additional insurance.
Session.
Any discussions?
Yeah, you have a video? Just kidding, just kidding.
Oh, we have the town hall.
Okay.
But I have a question, so when they start doing this roof, do you think it's gonna take a week or so?
I, um, I did not talk to the contractor.
But normally, does it take to do a roof?
Well, it's complex, it could be a week.
Well, I'm just wondering.
Did you see that?
Put a shirt on one of them.
You wanna take a quick look? Maybe you can find it, can you sort it? Bill thinks she saw it in there.
Take it as a cusp? Take it as a cusp? Yeah.
I can speak for the roof where Bill went, that's a guarantee.
Yeah, but you've got all these dips and valleys, and now the plywood is replacement.
Disturbance to, you know, everyday work, everyday work, being on the phone and stuff. How's that gonna work out for us?
Something we can ask them before they start.
Right, but I think any contractor, you're gonna have the same question, right? So, we, I don't have that answer for you.
Some people can work with us, and some people can't, I guess we'll have to.
It's gonna be noisy, that's for sure.
We'll have to talk about that, you know, if people can get things done.
All righty.
No, we didn't take a vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Next is request for proposals, basement water mitigation, we've got no bids.
Right, we still have water, and, you know, can we do it? There was one bidder that said he thought his company was gonna bid for it, and might have missed the mark, Dave. So I don't think we'll re-bid and see.
Sure, I I'm gonna re, we 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 bid, and after a second, you think that, is there anything, you think maybe, Rob, you think, Rob, you think anything would be, could be tweaked, and they said it too? Why?
In the specifications?
Yeah, in the specs, just maybe.
It's pretty basic, right?
I don't know, you, oh, you wrote it? Let's check this then, and we check this, you check this if you wrote it.
It was just because nobody responded, not because we are faced, you have somebody that came.
So. All right, so you think it's in, it's in due order? It's in due order, let's just see, do I have a question?
Gonna take a vote?
What's that?
I'll take a vote, we have a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
X to 742, 10 Rock Road. It's been a week and a half since he's been out of there?
Yeah, so on, on July 25th, Park Night, texting me, I said he vacated the building, and that he was providing with the asset code, again, the building. I met James, we can be there after. So James was able to talk to the, uh, does the superior codes, the box, um, and he switched mobile within an hour of the, of the phone, I couldn't, pretty technical. So the cameras, the arms, the door locks were fine. Did a little bit cleaning, other than that, the, uh, worked out the plumbing and then fixed a couple of toilets. Guess those toilets can't be sitting for that long, feel like this one. He fixed those, and it's just, I'm ready to make the next steps now.
If I, if he came the other day, probably the next step is writing an RFP ASAP for renovations, alterations, additions to the future town hall, because that money runs out December 2024, so get this in the pipeline, we'll take to do an RFP, Kim.
I think we did it before with Mr. Asperanos.
Do we, do we have to vote on setting this RFP out, or can we authorize Kim to send one?
I think.
Vote on it?
I I think we should, I I, just for discussion, Ken and I have talked about this as well. I I would like to, my own move, uh, that we make Ken the, the charge of the prime master of the world, whatever you call it, clerk of the works or something, so he can move forward as quickly, no clerk, you know, project manager. Project manager, that's one, proj, project manager, we got a clerk here, project manager. Can we discuss that?
They, they are project managers.
What I'm saying, if he does an RFP, do we need to have a vote to set that RFP out?
Well, I think we should authorize him to move this forward as quickly as we can.
To prove it, you, Bill, I mean, the expenditure's on it.
Can you do it in two weeks? When when were we gonna do a specialty possibly?
You were, and they shut mine.
No, you think it was like dollars?
What was that date?
Oh, oh.
I think we can.
That's what I'm, just having forward it to you, if anybody has any comments, then just send it right out, now.
Well, that's my motion, when I'm charged and moving forward.
We'll call the RFP, is there a second?
I think I seconded it already, all. All in favor?
Aye.
And then me and Ken were having another discussion of the minor things that need fixed up there, commence fixing them. When they pulled off on that roof trust, because Bill was up in the attic, and it had already been supported, if we're gonna change a roof line, why do we wanna spend $700,000? That was, you said what they supported, what, two by sixes, wasn't it?
Yep.
It had already been done, so. Before we go spend money on, maybe need to be carpentry work, where they might be changing that roof line. But there was the one minor, well, we can change oil tank, me and Ken can't find a leak, but they said there was a leak, so. One also happened, it was jolly. Need a chance to dig up top of that tank, I might have a riser that fits that.
Okay. We mowed the grass today for the first time.
Well, the way, the one supplier I use would normally drop stuff off, but they have a partial load with the price of fuel and everything else. Now they charge $175. We had to.
We'll take it out. Did you mention more than one thing needed a riser there, though?
Uh, you probably put, it's it's got too open, you put one on the inlet, one on the outlet. The one lid was cracked at the inspection, it's only, it's only down 60.
You just want me to get it and fix it?
Two risers degrade with some heavy concrete lids, that'd be a jolly precast of that stuff.
Okay.
You just gotta get the right diameter, the kind of, the size. So, my other motion was for, to use some of these RFP funds to fix what needs fixed now.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was that two motions, 'cause if you want me to move forward, what needs to be done up there?
Yeah.
I just can't come back to the council, we only need once a month, and it's gonna take twenty months.
Cause he's gonna need, so. I still think, Rob, we'll be doing all the chairs.
If you get the RFP ready, we can post it, and then maybe.
Right, those all things have to be done, you know, so, um, you want me to be the project manager, at least I can stop the discussion, trying to find, uh, space needs.
I volunteer if you need a chair, it works.
Yeah, if it works, then I'll be clerk a little bit.
Do we have a second for using the RFP money to fix what needs to be fixed?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
I have one thing, one thing, one thing on the table, 42.
Okay.
I got, I just got something.
Wait, y'all, we've got something, go ahead.
Well, I, I, so, my, my motion was to put Ken, because he's Ken.
Oh, we already voted on that.
Well.
Not really.
Yeah.
My motion was for Ken to move forward with the RFP.
Right, that's it.
That's that, that's it, just, is that enough?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Project manager, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, so, you're doing, are you doing the RFP, or is it coming, are we putting it on the agenda in September, or are you?
No, we're doing it.
Putting it, we're putting it out in the paper before September?
Soon as it's done.
Got it, got it.
Soon as it's done.
But I have one thing on 742, if you're all done.
All right.
So you put up there a sign, future town hall, and we have had nothing but questions, when you move in, you know, when you move in, when you move in, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on?
It's the beginning.
We had people go there to pay their taxes, we've had people go there to license their dogs. I put on the website, if you brought up the website lately, I put a, I put a note that, um, 742 is not, um, I put, not, um.
Not functioning, not not active?
I totally agreed, I totally agree.
Yeah, and then, we're not, we're not there yet, and, uh, all town business should be done at 675 10 Rock Road until further notice. So what I wanted to ask you guys is if we could put a sign, coming soon, under construction. How about under construction, coming soon, 2020?
We already have, being as, the front going both ways, to say, for further information, go to www exitedri.gov. The website is not up, you get sidetracked, it'll just be to tell people what's going on.
Just a sign, small sign.
But but you know, an interesting, both sideways, it's a beautiful sign, but if there's a little thing, like, on an angle that says, coming soon.
Well, we already have a plan.
We have a plan for an angled thing to catch people when they're going 60 miles an hour by.
But we have, a little lady came in the other day, she said, I went up to the new place to tell my taxes, and it's already there.
That's in the future.
Sorry.
Well, somebody's working, you're working, I said, and he's working.
Okay.
Coming soon sign, coming soon, that's great, is that we, is that the word, coming soon?
Probably about that height, or fit on the top or something.
Well, or even if you do this, it's like, really brings people, okay?
Put it right across this line.
Just write something, just write on the top.
Well, good.
In red letters, coming soon.
But it's such a beautiful sign, but say, coming soon.
Well.
Functionality before fashion.
Under construction. Coming in 2028, 2023, 2025, I don't care.
I know, I know.
How many people sent it, you want two?
No, no.
Ken, seriously, everybody here gets the question every day.
Right, but they don't go up there, they're not gonna go up.
Yeah, what's gonna get so long?
Right, and that's what the point about.
Spend our day complaining.
That's the point about Bana was gonna be to say, for updates, go to the website. Unless you wanna hear something up in here, or fly up here to tell me about it.
I just wanted, coming soon, under construction.
Well, this was, there was a vote, um, several months ago. About putting up, visit www exitedri.gov, and you're gonna post something. Sorry to be inconvenient, but. Something out there for a sign on it.
I mean, I think there's somebody driving by, it's just something soon, it's just, it says, oh.
Yeah, it's good. Down here, say, when?
Yeah, they would, that's why I said, you know.
We don't know it.
How about coming pretty soon? How about maybe coming soon?
Okay, communications, we had number four, number two, and I think we discussed them both.
Yeah, I hope you have them.
Let him make a motion to take a five, eight minute break before we go into executive session? Second, all in favor?
Can I help, stop picking from the chair here? This is all right, now and later, this is my, at night. Don't hit the camera.
Every time I spin.